All right, we're gonna go ahead and convene to a regular scheduled meeting. At this time, please silence your cell phone. Be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time. Each person be allowed three minutes. We're gonna go and call this to order. And Pastor Jason from Living Word Inland Empire Church is gonna be doing the presentation, or invocation, and I'll go ahead and lead the pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Amen. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you this evening. First and foremost, God, give you thanks. Father, we thank you for, Father, who you are in our lives. We thank you for your love, your grace, and for your mercy and compassion that fills our lives every single day. We know, God, that we would not be where we're at today in our lives without it. We wanna thank you for this time of gathering, God, as we meet tonight to address the needs and concerns of this community. And as we meet here this evening, God, we pray and ask that your presence and your power would be manifest. We pray and lift up our city officials. We pray that you would just give them the wisdom and the guidance as they govern this evening. And we ask, God, that you would just give them peace in mind and body and in spirit. God, that peace that surpasses all understanding, as your word says. We pray, God, give them strength that only comes from you. We pray and ask for your blessing upon this meeting and upon this city tonight. Holy Spirit, fill this room, fill this atmosphere. We pray, God, that you be glorified in everything that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pastor Jason, are they doing, is it the June 6th, they're doing the thing at your church?
Yeah, the playground.
Okay. At what time?
I'm not too sure.
All right, I'll go with Pastor Ed. Well, thank you. It's a blessing when I was talking to him about it. Thank you for coming out tonight and doing the invocation. Okay, Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hesse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Item A, are we ordering additions or removal of any items on agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Public comment. Item B, this is opportunity for the members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act upon any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request the matter to be agendized for future meetings. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Shad Bowl.
Mr. Bowl.
Oh, automatically shuts off. Hey, well, it's way louder. Hello, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Shad Bowl, and I'm the Chair of Freedom Wall here in Grand Terrace. I would like to invite all you guys and the community to our Memorial Day service on Memorial Day, May 26 at 11:00 a.m. at Freedom Park. We present this every year, and we just look forward to honoring and showing our respect for our veterans. And if you happen to be in the neighborhood later on, about 8:00, stop by my house, and you'll have a light show. That's all.
Thank you, Shad. Hey, Shad, will you get with Judas to get that on the city calendar for us? Both the Freedom Wall and the light show?
What's that?
Will you get with Judas to get that on our city calendar?
Okay.
So she can get that on there. I'll work with you to get it on there.
Okay.
Next is Tony Rosales.
Good evening. Tony Rosales from the Office of Assemblywoman, Letitia Castillo. First, I'd like to say on behalf of the assemblywoman, she is very excited to join the city at this weekend's Blue Mountain Festival and Parade. She is very much looking forward to that, and we are also looking forward to having a table at the festival. So we encourage all city council members, all constituents, if you have any questions for the assemblywoman, please feel free to stop by at the table this coming Saturday. I would also like to just give an update legislatively. This week is the last week for the policy committees to meet. By the end of this week, all bills that will have passed will have met their deadline. Next week, next Friday, is the appropriations committee deadlines. So if there's any bills that are still left in appropriations, they're typically considered dead by the end of that. So next Friday, we will know what bills will be presented to all of the assembly members. That is it for my update. Thank you so much. If you have any other questions, please feel free to contact our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
And last, we have Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm so glad I attended the meeting today. It was very informative, and I'm glad I got a call from Cindy to saying what was going on, and it was gonna be happening today, because I didn't know. I missed a couple of meetings, and so hopefully I won't miss anymore. I'd like to thank everyone that participated in the Mount Vernon paving. It is so nice, and if I'd have been here a month ago, I'd have thanked you then, but I didn't make it. I'd like to know about TSG, the location, what's gonna happen down there? We haven't heard about it for six months or so. The same thing with J.C. Wallace. I was told back in October it would come up after the first year. Now it's May. And big trucks parking on Canal. The other night, there was one parked on the wrong side of the street on Preston at Palm. A resident called me. I called the sheriff's department, told them probably where the trucker lived. And when I called the next day to check on it, they said they had told him to move it, but the next day it was still there. So I guess they have, who do I call? You can't call the city hall about it, because they can't respond. Should the sheriff be the one to call? Will they give them tickets? Or will you write them notices? Because they're not supposed to be on Canal, and there's two of them that park there all the time, and they probably live at the Highlands. And so I'm sure it's a struggle, because they have to make a living, but they're not supposed to be there, especially this one up here on Preston. And then, great idea doing the pencils instead of the pens. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Connor. Can you tell Bobby who they need to call for illegal trucks?
No, the sheriff's is the right place to call the after hours. They can send code. The ones on Canal, I don't know about, but the ones on Preston, the one on Preston was ticketed. So, and I know that they've hit the one on Canal a couple of times. So it is an ongoing battle with those guys.
Yeah, it is. And I take the pictures, so I know who they are and how it's gonna happen, you know, but it's just, they should know better. Thank you.
I know we talked about it, Ms. Forbes, and we're trying to make the fines so they'll stop. You know, we're working on that, and we're, you know, me, I like to 24 hours and tell them, because I know, you know, it's a bad thing for the public, plus it creates blind spots, so. We're working on those issues, and they still got problems.
Could I say one more thing, please? Thank you for moving the blinking light from the trailer park entrance, the first trailer park entrance on Grand Terrace Road. It's in a much better location now. The speeding, like telling you how fast they're going, because it was really close to Barton Road. You moved it down. Much better, thank you. Now I know how fast I'm going. Thanks.
I'll make sure you do the speed limit. Thank you. All right. So we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon in the city council at any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request removal of the consent counter items. Is there any public comment on the consent counter?
No, sir.
Okay, so I have four, five, and eights being removed for discussion. And item seven, I have to say that I exclude myself from check number 82286 for 35985 for reimbursement of health insurance. Do you have any ones you want?
Item 20.
Item 20?
Yes, sir.
So four, five, eight, four, five, eight, 20. Any other ones?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Items 3, 10, and 15.
Okay. Any other ones for discussion? No? So I need a motion for 1, 2, 6, 7, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14.
Motion.
Second.
16, 17, 18, 21.
Motion.
Yeah. Second. We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Before we do, I have to read the title of the ordinance for item 21. Sorry to break the momentum there.
Go ahead. I forget we have one of those long ones in there.
The title of the ordinance for item 21 is as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, approving zoning code amendment, ZCA 24-04, amending the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Chapter 5.06 Home Occupation Permits, Chapter 5.40 Garage Sales, Chapter 5.42 Integrated Waste Management, Chapter 5.48 Massage Parlors and Massage Technicians, Chapter 8.108 Noise, Chapter 8.112 Fireworks, Chapter 9.05 Vending on City Sidewalks, Chapter 10.16 Storage of Vehicles, Intersection Obstruction, Chapter 12.32 Conduct on Public Property Parks, Chapter 12.56 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 15.56 Water-Efficient Landscape, Chapter 18.10 Residential Districts, Chapter 18.53 AG Agricultural Overlay District, Chapter 18.56 AG-2 Agricultural Overlay District, Chapter 18.64 Objective Design Standards, Chapter 18.80 Signs, and Chapter 18.82 Standards for Specified Land Uses and Activities, and a determination that ZCA 24-04 is exempt from SEQA Pursuit to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3 Common Sense Exemption. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Adrian. So please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so item three. Was that yours, Doug? No, three. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a significant amount of conversation about this item when it last came up, and I tried to simplify my motion, and I wanna credit staff for working to put this item together, but there was one thing that I overlooked in my motion, and I tried to make it simple but complete, and that's this proposed resolution doesn't address the scenario where we have a council member or the mayor request a letter of support or opposition that is on urgent legislation outside of a council meeting. It seems to me that we've got a resolution for, you know, a policy change here that we should make a minor tweak to before we approve it. So that being the case, I move that we amend the item to address the circumstances that would allow the mayor or a member of the council to request a letter of support or opposition following the procedure outlined in the resolution. And that would be my motion for an amendment.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you, Councilmember Brown, for giving me the heads-up, so I was able to prepare a little bit of language for your consideration. So currently, the resolution as adopted would contemplate that the city council has an opportunity to put something on an agenda to bring it to the council for any comments or any discussion. But there may be situations, especially with the state legislature, where they do something on the fly, and we have to respond pretty quickly. So, and I think that was Councilmember Brown's concern. So what we drafted is as follows, and let me know if this works. In instances of urgency legislation requiring a city response in less than 72 hours, and where the city council cannot otherwise convene, the city manager or mayor may sign a letter of support for the proposed legislation, provided that it aligns with the city council's stated goals and policies for the city. If that works.
That works.
So what do you wanna do? You wanna?
So if the council is agreeable to that, the maker of the motion could move the item with the addition of this language, and if there's a second, we can just adopt it tonight.
That's, I would amend my motion.
Okay.
All right, I'll second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item four.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's interesting how audits, you know, kind of push up a few items here and there, and I noticed, or I noted in our audit this round that, and I've already discussed this with the city manager, but I thought I'd bring it to the council for some kind of a poll. And there's two items that we have no adopted annual budget for at this point, and so I think it would be important for us to start easing some cash into those things in order to be ready. And one of them is the enhanced infrastructure facilities fee. We don't have a specific need at this point, but in order to be ready, if somebody comes with a shovel-ready project into the city, we attended in bulk some conferences here in the last week or so, and there was a large discussion about enhanced infrastructure facility fees, and I think it is a good tool. I think it's a good tool, because we have some vacant properties throughout the city, and we'd like to entice or incentivize people to, you know, builders, developers, that would like to do something with their property. And this is not a partnership between the city and that entity, but it definitely does cut some of the red tape out of the way by, say, pushing infrastructure up to a property line at least. It makes it pro-growth. And while we are not, you know, heavy pro-growth in the sense that we have lots of property all over the city to be able to fill, we do have some specific areas that it would come in handy, that we could show our end of the attitude. And so I'm thinking that the EIFD item should start looking into some cash going into it. Also, the Barton Colton Bridge, no budget there either. Now, the last estimate, and I don't know, and I would like some feedback from the city manager, last estimate for this little project, and it's the, what we call the bridge over the railroad, but the railroad's gone. The estimate was $300,000. I think that's baloney. I don't imagine that anything can be done for $300,000 other than opening a toolbox. And so I'm sure that there's more than that, but at this juncture, Colton is the primary. They're kind of the construction manager on this deal, and they promised us, in fact, actually, the mayor had their Public Works people contact me, and they promised us that in the first quarter of this year, we would be on our way, you know, going on this bridge. Well, then we should be ready. And it would seem to me that it would be appropriate to push some money into that to be ready. Since now we only have about $26,000 in that account, that's not ready. So those two items, while we are not flush with cash, we have a little bit, and so it would seem, I'd like to hear some feedback from the dais, if that would be something that the council at large would like to look at.
Before you go there, it is something that is independent of the audit.
Correct.
And this just triggered the question, because you saw the line on the audit.
Exactly.
And what we can do is, pending discussion, and the idea was, is that we have money in reserves, and that would be moved into that when the time comes. And if we're at a point where we wanna move that money and earmark it for this project, then as part of this budget process, we can then
Correct.
Pick an amount, and, no, $300,000 is not gonna build a bridge, but if we move a million dollars into the bridge project, and as we do the development impact fees, and have the fees for the enhanced infrastructure, and start funding that, then both of those start to make sense.
Right.
And we can do that as part of this year's budget process, if that's the direction we get from council.
Yes, and that's the only item, other than the fact that it kind of was a red flag in the audit to look at that 7.1 deferred pension liability. Wow. Whoa. You know, it will go down naturally, but for right now, that's a nasty millstone. It's a good thing that we don't have to deal with the state in relation to it, because it's a soft cost. So it does have a tendency to do that. It's, but it's something that we have to prepare for, so. Anyway, that's the items on number four.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So did you have an idea about how much you think needs to go in?
You know, I think it's better perpetrated to the city manager, what he thinks the numbers might be.
I mean, I heard you throw that million out. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm, and this is just a wild guess. The last bridge I built was three and a half million dollars. It was a much bigger bridge.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's
So we're paying half of it, so a million bucks is a $2 million bridge. It's, it would be a guess. We'd have to get with Colton and figure out what their engineer's estimate is, and then we can come back with a reasonable amount.
Has any grant request been put in for that bridge yet? Of any kind?
Not on our side. I don't know if Colton has.
We share another road with Colton, you know, and we're trying to, have been for years trying to get work done on it, too. And, I mean, are we, do they put in the request? Do we put in the request? Do we do it together? I've always heard if we do it together, we got a much better chance of getting a successful outcome.
We have put in joint requests for the other road.
Okay.
And Colton's always been the lead agency on the bridge, so it's something that we've left up to them to do.
Well, they're the lead agency on the bridge, too. The Little Ricketty Bridge, they'll lead on that, too, right?
Colton is the lead agency on the bridge.
Yeah. And so, okay. So, but, I mean, sure, they said 2025. I remember hearing that three years ago, like you said, but obviously, it's not, you know, and so what I'm wondering is, are we gonna tie up some money we're gonna need somewhere else?
Well, you can make the argument both ways. Are we tying up money we're gonna need somewhere else? Are we gonna put away money and not spend it before we need it for this? So you can argue both sides. And it really, in one pace, it is in reserves. We have the money there. And once we earmark it for that project, then that keeps us from using it for something else. On the other side, in the back of your mind, you know it's in reserves. You know, you know you need new tires for the car, whether you put it on your budget or not, it's kind of there and earmarked for you. So, but we can look at that as a budgeting process, if the direction from the council is to set that aside.
If I might, Mayor, I'd also do a little P.S. to that, considering, and talking about the Barton Colton Bridge. The timing at this point, you can see the curb stakes from that large industrial tilt-up that Colton put in there, one of their cookie cutter pieces. And they're about, quote unquote, they've already staked it twice, so this is the third time that I know of. They're about to actually start the curb and into that entrance, and there's really nothing to keep them from going in that direction, so this might be the time to get our whole, you know, whole situation in order to be able to respond to that, because if you've driven over that particular area for a while, I don't know why Colton hasn't made them do a little better job of repairing it, but it just beat the daylights out of our road, our joint road. And so if the time is right for them to straighten it out, and then if we are able to follow up with the bridge shortly after that, it would be neat. That's all I have for number four.
Counsel, just to let you guys know, in June, I will be bringing our reserves, and usually for infrastructure, I wanna say there's about 1.5, 1.7 that I earmark. It stays in the general fund, but it is earmarked, just for your knowledge.
Thank you for that information.
So Doug, are you talking about the Little Ricketty Bridge, or the bridge that has the railroad tracks underneath it?
The bridge that has the railroad tracks underneath it. It didn't have the, doesn't have the railroad tracks anymore, the rickety one.
Yeah. I thought that bridge was coming down. They're gonna just do a slope on that thing.
Yes.
That's, it's not, when we say bridge, it'll be a culvert over the cut and basically a level road.
Yeah. It's a grade crossing, is what it is.
All right. So what do you wanna do on your item here, Doug, that you pulled?
Four was a receive and file, and I think we've heard input, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Receive and file four.
So you would have to then, if you want to, we can do piecemeal them, or we can do them all as a group again, and approve them, whichever path you guys would like to run.
You guys have any questions?
On this item? I don't have any questions on this item, but I would like to thank Councilmember Wilson for mentioning the EFID. I noticed that it was unfunded, and I think it's an important tool that we have in our tool chest for economic development. And regarding the bridges, I feel the need to chime in, because the Old Railroad Crossing Bridge on Barton Road, from a timing standpoint, is, has to be a much higher priority for us. That's a major artery there, whereas the Mount Vernon slope can wait. It's my understanding from talking with Colton city officials that they have funding to replace and widen the concrete bridge. It's stamped, I think, 1936. It's the one that's further west of the bridge that Councilmember Wilson was referring to. So we should make that a priority, and maybe you wanna reach out to Colton, and so we could try to coordinate our efforts. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So we're gonna receive and file number four.
What we'll do is, we'll just work through them, and then you can vote to approve all of them as a package again, if that's all right.
Item five.
Item five is the Housing Successor Agency. It also has to do with the audit. And it's not my intention to hold up the audit. I'm gonna just state that. It's just that these things come to mind, and you have to grab them when you need to. Anyway, we have a restricted balance for low and moderate housing, and our net at this point is $1,404,000 and some change. And with that, it seems appropriate to pinpoint our needs and how we can, you know, look at the definition of how these funds can be used, and see how it will be best used for the community. We don't know what our needs are at this point, because the affordable housing issue is kind of a movable feast, but there might be portions of it that are attached to it, similar to the RDA at a point. RDA was set up for the same, for a dovetailed version, and that was just to provide affordable housing and, you know, promote that type of mitigation. How much and the limitations that might be stuck on those things is gonna be important to us to be able to, you know, continue the funding on it, and not necessarily earmark, but at least have some kind of a P.S. that says, here's what we would like to accomplish in the coming years in relation to these things, and what might be coming down the pipe. So I just, if there's any comment from the council, it would seem to me that it would be a good idea, like I said, we've got a net of $1,439,000, and we never like to see anything pee away. So, you know, for the time being, it might be worthwhile to maybe even spend a little bit of time thinking about what we might be going towards in relation to that, since affordable housing, of course, is a hot topic. Anyway, so it's, like I said, it's not my intention to hold up the audit. I just think it's great that these things are there for us to address, and that's it on that particular item. So I would like to move the approval of this particular item. That'd be my motion.
Second. First and the second.
Do you wanna incorporate item four as well?
Do you wanna do?
You wanna do three and four as well, three and four as well?
We already did three.
Oh.
So you did three, so you wanna do four?
Doing four and five.
Four and five? So, four, we're receiving and filing, right?
That's correct. Submotion.
Five, we're making a motion for approval.
It's receiving file as well, I believe.
It's receiving file.
Receiving file?
Yeah.
Both of them are. So please vote for item four and five.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, what's eight? Doug, did you call eight too?
Yes. Item eight, um, item eight has to do with the San Bernardino County Sheriff, this will be our thirty-two, thirty-second amendment to our agreement with the sheriffs. And if you look through the sheriff's agreement, the original sheriff's agreement, there is no limitation as to, as to enforcement. I think it's terrific that we have a little rate schedule that we get, and I think it's nice to know that the hours are assigned the way the sheriffs, you know, have decided in their best interest how it's gonna work. And I do know that we tried to, in a sense of cooperation, tried to, uh, float a tax bond, and maybe we will restructure that and come back with it, so that we can, uh, maybe conjure up some additional funding. The bottom line is, is that the number is two million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in excess of that. And I greatly appreciate the response that happened the other day here, about, about a week ago. Uh, I think we were all up in Arrowhead when all this took place, uh, with the person that barricaded themselves in a, in a house, and, and, you know, that was a dangerous situation. There had to be, you know, half the, the sheriff's force showed up in, in force to take care of that, and I think that's terrific. But since there's no limitation, uh, I don't believe, and I, and I may be wrong, but I don't believe that there is anything in the contract that we operate under that limits where the sheriff administration takes place. So in other words, everything is being enforced equally from that standpoint, on that premise. Our traffic enforcement has to get better, in my opinion. Traffic enforcement, I know we are, we are doing tickets here and there, and that's, that's good. I don't want to see anybody get their head patted and suggest that, you know, that it's okay for them to go forward. Anytime anybody goes beyond the speed limit, including any of our north-south streets, where we have some throes, that we have difficulty with that, I think, you know, that enforcement's gotta be tightened up. Unfortunately, I see many bikes riding around the city. And I've seen, I think, one sheriff's car ride past my house in, over the last, maybe three weeks. And this, again, is my personal opinion, but I believe it is good for the community, for us to get equal enforcement on these issues, because we don't have a ton of accidents that happen, but when they do, of course, they're very unfortunate. Speed has gotta be something that really, you know, gets addressed, and, and I, and I bring this to the, to the council only from the standpoint that we have an influx, well, actually, ingress and egress from the south that we never really thought was gonna happen to the extent that it has. We have a ton of vehicles coming to and fro from the south, from High Grove, and I don't think we have anywhere near the funding to be able to mitigate that situation. And I know in the past, I've requested that we analyze that and determine how they're getting away with, basically, with murder, by throwing vehicles at us and loading up our roads during our peak hours. But I think it's time that we address that in concert with how the sheriffs are gonna be able to address, uh, stronger enforcement on traffic. And that's my opinion, that's all I have, Mayor. And I'd like to vote for this item, or, to be, uh, to file.
Second.
Anybody else have any other comments on it?
Well, Doug, I, I understand, and I feel your pain, 'cause when they had a, when the freeway was shut down right after the pedestrian got hit, I, I wanted to go to Amazon and order spike strips, 'cause it was crazy. It was like, and, and we, and we do, we get that freeway traffic to come through here, and they come right up my street and they go through your street. And once again, we have one officer doing, you know, we can't, but I understa, you know, and, sorry, I don't want to put a damper or put a handcuffs on officer, but, you know, with speeding tickets, you know, some of these, you know, that's your own prerogative, if you want to let them go, or a warning or not, but, you know, it's, some of these people don't need warnings anymore, and we know that. But yes, but if we had the S S S, would that also help out for doing that for the tickets and everything else? You guys wouldn't be caught up on anything?
Oh, absolutely, it's a trickle-down effect, that S S S would be able to take care of the, you know, paper crime calls and dealing with, um, other issues, quality of life issues that the dep, that would allow the deputy to be more proactive, absolutely.
Yeah. Hold on, how much is, do you know what the S S S would cost roughly?
I don't, but I can get it to you.
All right. Okay, yeah, 'cause we're just, you know, we're trying to figure out, but yeah, but while you guys are cruising and patrolling, you know, and, and we see it, and just like, you know, would your officer stop if we see, you know, like a big rig parked, that's been parked there illegally, and make, get, write that citation, or would they just drive by it?
Oh, no, they're expected to, especially in a con, contract city where traffic enforcement is one of our duties. County operations, the county areas, C H P handles all the traffic violations as far as tickets and parking and everything, but for contracts, they're expected to, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
And just a P S in relation to that, the contract does not have any limitations. In other words, what has happened over a period of time, and maybe thirty-two amendments, uh, is there have been different regimes that have, that have been in the seat, and the thought pattern has kind of seeped out into, well, you know, basically, you guys can't afford it. No, that's not true, that's not the way the agreement is written. The agreement is written that the sheriffs provide all the sheriff's service, and furthermore, it's at the predilection of the sheriff's department. In other words, the way you guys do it is up to you. That's the way lump sum agreements work. And because of that, we have, you know, our hands are off. How you do it is up to you, and that's very specific in that agreement. So how the money is spent and all the rest of that stuff means nothing to us. The fact is, we pay for that. We pay for it. So it doesn't mean Robin Peter to pay Paul, and, you know, and letting some other things drop. It doesn't work that way in a lump sum agreement. So that's why I've expressed this concern. Thank you.
Okay, so you had a motion, and Councilman Allen had a second. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, this is to approve the, uh, the amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item ten. Who had ten?
Are you gonna take the questions on this one, Conrad?
I don't know, maybe I'll punt, we'll see who can make nervous.
No, we can, we can let her sit. So, um, I know this, this project's taken, it's, you know, many years just to get to this point, and the Blue Mountain Trail Project, and a lot of people are excited about it. In reading, uh, through the, the item though, I was curious if, um, we had done any community outreach at all regarding the project location to the neighboring property owners?
Oh, there's been mountains of community outreach done, probably four or five years ago, um, because at one point, there was a look to do it at the end of Palm, Segastead wasn't interested, we wasted a bunch of money exploring that site, and then we did community outreach in that neighborhood where the, the existing site is. There are some residents that at that time were not pleased, um, where it's gonna be, because it's adjacent to their property. And as this goes forward, and, uh, the issue comes back, because it will come back to council for approval of the project and construction, that'll be the time for the community to, to speak up.
Okay, well, that being said, and, you know, to me, it's not acceptable to go forward at this point without having a plan for robust community outreach and input. Just a few short months ago, I had the opportunity to walk through those neighborhoods with my colleague here to my left, and, um, we got feedback from a few people, and I think that as we're designing the project, it's critically important that we hear their voices and try to address their concerns from a design standpoint.
We, we can do it again, if you like, but, um, the, what we've done is incorporate the input we had the last time we did the community outreach, um, for this project.
Well, in, in the last five years, I've had three new neighbors, and we're in the same neighborhood as is Councilmember Wilson, and, um, I, I'd never heard anything formally from the city regarding the project. I just think it's, it's really important we get everyone's feedback, and there are some concerns that can be addressed from a design standpoint. We're at that point in the project where if we can put some, you know, mitigation measures in place during construction, we should do so, that's the responsible thing to do. I would like to see that done, and I would also like to get feedback from our public safety partners who are going to be responsible for policing that area. We are gonna have, we're, we're essentially taking the issues that we have now that are, that are kind of dispersed in our city, from other areas like Palm and Glendora and Westwood, and we're gonna bring them all over there. So that's, it's gonna be easier for the sheriff, 'cause he's gonna know where to find, there, our, our deputies are gonna know where to find people. We're also gonna have medical aid responses, I think, probably on a fairly routine basis there, I would look to our fire partner, but there, that'll, all of that has to be incorporated in this plan for this, this trailhead as we go forward. And I think now is the time to have those conversations and get that feedback and have those plans in place.
Like I said, we can do it again.
Okay.
And if I may add, um, we have, as Con, the city manager has mentioned, um, performed a community engagement in the past, and it has been under contract with Hirschen Associates. They're the most familiar with the land, so moving forward with this item doesn't negate us actually engaging in community engagement with the, you know, our residents.
Thank you. I, again, think it's important, though, that we not have, we don't have our consultants doing work that needs to be changed later, because we didn't get input from our residents first. So if we can make sure that the sequence of, of the contract is coordinated, so we can get feedback from those impacted neighbors, um, prior to, uh, the final design, I think that would be wise. So that.
I'm, I'm waiting for direction from the council.
I was gonna say, so if, if I have to, um, make that in the form of a motion, I would like to see a robust community outreach plan put in place prior to finalization of construction documents for the project. Yes, it is.
Second.
So you, the, before, before you approve the contract, or before finalization of the construction documents?
Before finalization of the construction documents.
Okay, so, we're approving the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, I just want to be clear that I don't cross the line.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Fortunately, do we have to go back to the consultant to negotiate anything with respect to that task before we approve this?
It's likely we, we may, we may need to, we don't have an on-call.
Right.
Um, ex, cost with them.
So, I, I would suggest then, if it's acceptable to the council, that we discuss it with the consultant, if we have to make a modification of the cost to incorporate that, we do that before having the council approve it.
That makes sense.
All right, and I assume we're good on time, I mean, this has been.
Yes.
Going on for a long time, so.
Yes.
Okay, so, with council's approval, we'll bring this item back at the next meeting.
So we want to bring this item back?
Yes, no action necessary. We have the direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have item fifteen.
How convenient. I've got a couple things on this item. First and foremost, um, I think you did, uh, Ms. Tillman, you did an excellent job writing the item. I did have a question, though, regarding the janitorial services for the senior center. So, for those of you who, who weren't here earlier, we had a workshop, and we talked a lot about expansion of senior services from a program standpoint and a utilization of that facility. I believe the, that your staff report said it was used by community organizations seventy times, seventy-nine times in the last year. Well, we're, we're only proposing to have janitorial services at the facility two days a week, it's used every day for food service, we're talking about meals and activities at the senior center, so what is the thought process behind only having janitorial services two days a week?
The thought process is, when we, uh, started one day a week, is that we didn't have service at all. So one day a week was an improvement. And then with the added use of community groups using the senior center, and then now staff will be on site, we're just trying to add an additional service, and this is to, we're gonna try to separate the days, so it'll be Monday morning and Thursday evening, so that we're getting the, the space cleaned, but we're just trying to conserve costs as well. So we, we're adding a day because we think it's necessary, um, but we're open to adding as many days as council allows.
While there is additional use, it's not, it's not like we're running a bus station there, I mean, there's, there is additional use, but it's not heavy, intense use. The kitchen is, is managed and cleaned by F S A, and that's why we put up the barriers so that regular people can't get in there, which was an issue. So now we're down to cleaning the bathrooms and, um, whatever, housekeeping in the area. And we're, we're looking at two days a week, should be sufficient to do that, um, for the intensity of the use that we're getting now. If, if it's not, then we can look at expanding that.
Okay, then, on the rentals, so the revenue that's, that's coming from those rentals, is using, is that used to, um, offset our janitorial costs following those events?
Used to offset operations, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's, those were my questions regarding that. I just want to make sure that we're doing a sufficient job of keeping our senior center clean and taking care of our seniors over there, especially with the intent to expand the programs.
See, that's the primary reason that we have a staff person going to work there, is 'cause there was all kinds of stuff going on that, um, should not have been, and the maintenance and care of that was not being done the way it should be. So I'll be able to tell you in six months whether two days is enough, or whether it needs to be more.
Thank you, Conrad. Well, I have one more, one more issue regarding this item, and, uh, and I'm sure my colleagues will appreciate it, um, and the public. As I said, I thought you did an excellent job writing this item. My suggestion for you, Mr. City Manager, and I know we're here setting policy, and I'm not trying to micromanage, but in looking at the way that Ms. Tillman wrote this item, my suggestion is that you institute a standard practice for these, um, for all of the agenda reports. The way that she writes her recommendations, if you look at her, and, and I, I've looked at other agencies' agenda items, and I know it's kind of all over the place, but the way she writes her recommendations, she has a fiscal impact in each recommendation. So in this one, we're approving a contract amendment, the fiscal impact is in it, and then it's right in the recommendation. Then when you go down to the bottom of her items, and it's not just this item that you wrote, but you go to the fiscal impact, she again mentions the contract amendment, but if you look at the next item she wrote, um, I believe it's item sixteen, on landscaping services, she lists the contract amount for each year in the fiscal impact and the total contract amount. So if anyone in the public pulls up this item, they're gonna say, well, the city council is spending, you know, nine thousand dollars a year on Richard Rollins Park, and then if they read down through the item, they'll see the total contract value, you know, over five-year periods, forty-five thousand dollars, and I'm just making these numbers up, 'cause item's not in front of me. But it's transparent, it's clear, it's concise, and anybody from the public can read it and easily understand. And anybody from the public can read it and easily understand it without opening three attachments and trying to read through an entire contract for services. And I would like to see this as just kind of a standard format that's used for any item that's presented to us that has a fiscal impact. So that's my two cents for you. And with that, you know, happy to move the item.
So you approve item 15? Do I have a second?
Second.
So Attorney, do you have anything to add? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 20.
Thank you. I pulled this item for discussion for a couple of reasons. While I understand the contribution in economic development in the city, there are a number of concerns. First of all, for those not aware, this item was sent to council for approval because the alcohol beverage control department... Alcohol beverage control indicated that there is an oversaturation of liquor licenses in the city of Grand Terrace. This specific item is in relation to the Grand Terrace Market on the corner of Michigan and Van Buren. At that location, you have three residential properties at each corner and one zoned commercial property at that location. And while I understand that this location holds a lot of nostalgia for the community, there have also been a lot of changes in Grand Terrace since this location became vacant. I received a number of concerns from residents. I'm the only person on the dais who lives on the west side of Mount Vernon with the rest of my colleagues living on the east. And so in review of this report, our three and a half square miles in the city, we have eight liquor licenses already, deeming an oversaturation with it coming back to council, it being placed on consent calendar, which I wasn't comfortable with moving this item forward without, one, being able to share with my colleagues the concerns that were raised by the residents, those being the influx of crime in the city of Grand Terrace. According to the report provided by Christian Thomas with ABC, there's a stipulation with the permit, a conditional... A condition that was built in that stated there cannot be any loitering at that location. We don't have the public safety personnel to enforce that. We heard earlier during our workshop that on personal property, we also cannot regulate the loitering that takes place. We have liquor stores on the main drag here through Barton also who have issues with loitering taking place, drinking on the property, as well as the... The number of issues that have stemmed from outside entities, either who are residing on facilities that are on Barton Road or who are staying on public property that we also cannot regulate. Another item in this report indicated that this is a pathway where many people walk. The difference between the people who walk on Michigan versus those on Observation, those walking up on Observation are out getting a breath of fresh air. They are exercising. Those who are walking down Michigan are high school students and are elementary students coming through. We have other business facilities, those issues that were raised as well, that are in that area where multiple times out of the year, we have to call not only just our law enforcement, but we have to employ outside resources to deal with those who have engaged in altercations that have overflowed into the local Stater Brothers. And that happens multiple times. With the other concern also raised from the residents, this location will be open until midnight. And there were very few who stated, you know, it was around before. This is how it operated, and I'm sure it's going to be fine. And others who said, why are we putting a liquor store in the middle of our neighborhood? And so I wanted to make sure that I brought forth the concerns from the community, those who did not realize that it wasn't just a market that was opening. And to be able to express their concerns, be their voice, and it not appear as if we just rubber stamped this in consent calendar. That's all I have. Thank you.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to pull this and not approve it? Or how... You don't want to make a motion for approval, then?
I will not be making a motion for approval. I wanted to be able to present the information brought forward from those living on my side of the community for this dais to consider ahead of it passing through consent without discussion. And so I would appreciate the input from my colleagues here.
All right.
I have a question.
Councilor Allen.
Do you know how many liquor licenses it would... What's... When did we cross the threshold to be over... Is it five for our city, I think?
It doesn't indicate in here, although it does state, pardon me, one license per 1,409 persons. For this consensus, which has a population of 4,254, there should be a maximum of three. We are at eight.
Okay.
This would be nine.
I also happen to notice that in the report where the concentration of liquor of... Excuse me, of those licenses are, and they're all on Barton Road. They're right there in our commercial corridor. And, you know, and they're like next-door neighbors to each other. And some of the businesses that have these licenses are actually owned by the same people. You know, they have a license for each one of their different... So, yeah, you know, so one owner has more than one license. But I happen to notice this one that's based in Sacramento. Did you notice that?
Yes.
Yeah. There's a somebody... Some entity in Sacramento that only does internet sales. And they're scarfing up a license that could be used by a storefront here in town. I don't get that either, but...
And just to be clear, of the eight that are on here, all of the... There are seven. Seven of the eight are all west of Mount Vernon. And every single one bumps up behind a residence. This one would be in a residential community for one corner that is zoned for commercial.
The one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
But all these others are right on Barton Road on our commercial corridor. They're not near residences, other than a block away, you know, when you start... But, I mean, do you feel like it'd be better to keep all the alcohol sales on Barton Road? It makes it very convenient for those of us that live near Barton Road, but it makes it very inconvenient for those that live over in your neck of the woods, as you, you know, you like to talk about where none of us live. So it's...
Right, those...
I know it's, you know...
Those exiting Cal State at midnight.
Right. And, you know, it just... On packet page 607, it says, "Overconcentration does not mean that negative or adverse impacts have occurred within the census tract." Just, it only means that based on the ratio that's used, whoever determined this ratio, that there's more licenses existing than mathematically permitted. But it also states that, you know, there's never been an issue in the last 35 years with this entity. And they've had it been in good standing with an ABC license. So I... You know, it's a... They're asking for the council to sign a letter of convenience, letter for the convenience for the residents. And it is true, it would be much more convenient for the residents over in your area to have this little store there available for them to use and not have to, you know, drive all the way... Not that it's a huge journey to Barton Road, you know. I mean, we're only a little tiny town. You can walk over there. But still, I get the point now. And I also get your point, too, you know, is... But there's... I think there's... This is not just an alcohol sales store. Is it... They're selling other stuff, too, right?
Correct.
Like food and milk and all that stuff, snacks?
It says market, but the request here...
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Okay.
City Manager, you have anything you want to chime in?
Well, there's a history of that operation at that location with no issues in the past. If you look at the existing sales, one of them is clearly a mistake on number 20 on that, on page 607. Item number 20 is clearly a mistake by ABC. That is definitely not in our area. And then if you break down some of the larger ones, you have CVS and Stater Brothers and Grocery Outlet. They really aren't market-type activities. And we pull out the gas stations, and we're really down to, you know, Grand Terrace Liquor being the only liquor store-type operation. And so this one would be more along the lines of a 7-Eleven or a Circle K or something that's a convenience store operation. Now, I don't live in the neighborhood, so therefore I'm not, you know... I'm not able to address the impacts from the neighborhood. But if you break it out, it is kind of a different animal than the other licenses here in town. And like I said, there is a history of that operation. And, you know, the item was noticed to ABC. They could have put up a... If there was a problem with residents, they could have, when that came to ABC for their noticing, could have brought that up as well. And there was nothing brought up as a negative or a detrimental effect. This is a convenience effect. And I think that's the extent where I'm going to go with that.
Can you just let us know why it was shut down for the last six years and has remained vacant?
Why it was shut down was before I got here, but I assume businesses come and go. So the business went away for whatever reason. And then there were multiple unpermitted additions and construction and activities that happened to the building, not the operation. And until they resolved that, they could not reopen. And this gentleman has purchased the site, cleaned up the unpermitted building and the hazardous building issues, and is planning on reopening the market there.
Conrad, are these the same gentlemen owned it before?
No.
So it's whole different people?
These are new owners.
Because the owners before had a legal marijuana facility in the back.
That was two... If it was, it was two or three owners ago because the last owner...
Two or three owners that went through that many hands?
Yes, it's changed hands at least twice since... Once to this guy, so two times since I've been here. And nobody... The people that had bought it were unwilling to make the changes to bring it into building code compliance so that they could open it.
So would this facility be able to survive with no alcohol sales?
That would be up for the owner to speak to their business plan. But I'm assuming it's a fairly substantial portion of their sales, most of the convenience stores are.
So if...
The owner is here to speak if you want to, you know, if you want to delve into the issues with him.
So ABC, I mean, if they say that we have enough alcohol sales, then why are we looking at more liquor stores?
They are... Their numbers are a formula to use by the number of the population per census tract, which is, I guess, spread across California makes sense. But our commercial area in Grand Terrace serves more than our census tract because we're serving High Grove, we're serving other portions. They come into town to spend their money. And so we're not just doing the liquor sales for Grand Terrace. We're doing liquor sales for a bigger area. And people are coming from outside that tract. So it would make sense that you would have, you know, what... We would have more liquor stores. We also have more pizza parlors and nail salons, too, because people come in for those... And not to minimize the alcohol piece, but, you know, people come in for those services because we are an attractor for kind of the residential services that most households use.
Councilor Allen?
Is this a license for beer and wine or for everything, including hard liquor?
This is liquor, not just beer and wine.
It's a Level 21.
Okay. That was... I was just wondering about that.
So hypothetically, when the Lewis Project comes in, do they plan on opening up any shops over there? Any convenience stores?
There is a commercial component to Lewis. There's been zero discussion, even in the specific plan on what... Whether that is real estate offices or car sales or, you know, grocery stores. There's no idea what that's going to be.
Mayor Protem, how many people came to you with concern on this? You have a estimate?
Approximately 40.
Forty?
Yes, sir.
That's a lot. All right. So what do we want to do with this item? Do we want to have a... Do you want to do a public outreach for this? Or do you want to just kill this item or not move it forward? What are we looking at?
I really would not want to kill this item whole together. I mean, I think that... I think that we're being a little bit premature in that because when this market closed... When this market was open before, we were in excess with liquor licenses in this city. We have always had more than ABC says is this mathematical ratio. This city has always had more than ABC says. So I don't think the argument or the position of saying that we're just over the limit is one to justify shutting down the opportunity of this business to go forward. Because... And when we were over before for all those years, I don't recall there being... I've lived here for over 25 years. I don't recall there being anything in the news about Grand Terrace Market, you know, that could be attributed to their liquor sales or anything going on in Grand Terrace or any other store that sells alcohol in Grand Terrace. So, you know, with that said, I think that... One of the things that we, like Conrad said, one of the things we need to look at or think about is that there's the greater Grand Terrace area that we serve, which is outside of our city limits. You know, our Chamber of Commerce has expanded itself now to include businesses outside of our city, you know. And so therefore, not only are those businesses that our chamber is including, but there are residents, like Conrad was pointing out. There's more residents living in Spring Mountain Ranch, I think, than there are in Grand Terrace just about. They certainly have more houses there than we have. They certainly have more houses there than we have. So, you know, and we're their next door neighbor, wherever they go shopping. So I think that we would be, I mean, shooting ourselves in the foot, it's a source of revenue for the city. And, and we are, you know, the convenience to our residents, you know, trying to make a, uh, something that's convenient for the residents. Now, I don't know if a CUP would be in order here.
I think based on the report, it states that a CUP is not something that is implemented here. And to your point, it, it is a revenue source and that is how I opened my statement, that I understand the importance of, of this item with regard to economic development within our city. However, I would, I would be irresponsible had I not brought forward the concerns of the community and where I live, which is very different from the areas that you all live in. And so while we are still small, my corner is very different, which was my purpose of bringing it forward. Um, you know, we can move the item and let the vote decide, but I wanted to ensure that my colleagues understood the concerns coming from my side of the tracks.
Let me ask her quick. Mayor Protem, if, if you had 40 people, did you tell them that this item was on the agenda tonight and did they send, I mean, because we're not having, do we have anybody who wants to talk on this item?
No, sir.
So we had nobody talking and then did they send emails or they just called you to us?
They connected with me. And so of the 40, we had maybe about 10% who said, I've lived here a long time, it wasn't a problem in the past. We had others who said, well, if there's an issue, we'll deal with the issues ourselves with regard to ensuring the security of our neighborhood. And the others were elderly and stay-at-home moms who live along the drag of Ambeur and who were concerned.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm looking at the general plan map. And that whole area, that section is all general commercial and with industrial immediately to the south. On the west, the west of that location is the Lewis specific plan. I was just wondering if we had anything from Lewis, are we building, uh, single-family homes adjacent to this general commercial or do you guys have an idea of what they want to, want to do there from a project standpoint? Be immediately west to that, uh, general commercial zoning.
Well, Lewis will be building houses to the, the west of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So while I have you at the podium, looking at Michigan Avenue, so I, I, I'm kind of looking at land use and development in Grand Terrace and look at everything kind of like with the, what's it going to look like 20 years from now from, with that lens, you know? Michigan Avenue, so we've got general commercial that, uh, north of that is low-density residential before we get back to general commercial again. Is that eventually all going to be general commercial on the west side of Michigan? And, and do you think Michigan will be widened to four lanes at some point in time? Or is it, are we always going to be at, at two lanes down there? It just seems to me, looking towards the future, what-
If I had to use my crystal ball, looking towards the future, I would say Michigan's going to get wider and I would say we probably have mixed use with a lot more higher-density residential going down Michigan, if I had to look 50 years into the future.
Which could even, could be mixed use with commercial, uh, you know, multiple-story commercial-
Yeah, it could be vertical or horizontal mixed use, that'd be my-
And, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to think like, you know, what's, what's Grand Terrace going to look like 40 years from now, you know?
Yeah.
And we need to, we need to plan for good quality development and so I think it's important always looking at things with an eye to the future. So that's why I asked, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, no problem.
Can I, uh, jump in here real quick?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I'm sure that, but probably, you know, Mayor and, and Councilmember Wilson will recall this, but as long as I've been on this council and when I was on the Planning Commission, there was a plan called the Michigan Street Walkable Corridor Plan. I don't know where it's at right now, but the plan is never to go four lane or three lane, it's to stay two lane and other, and in fact, to cut off truck traffic as soon as Commerce Way gets extended, to make it something that people can safely and enjoyably walk along and have minimal traffic on it except for the residents that live there. It's never, ever been, that I've ever heard of, had a, a plan to have a commercial industrial on the west side of it, other than the, the little market there and, uh, weld and pumps, you know? It's just, it's always, there's this, there's, there's all, there's been a plan in place to put in, uh, traffic control devices and, and lane, you know, to reduce lanes and things like that, so that it's a safe, walkable way for the residents who live there to get to the high school. That was the main reason for doing it. And with the, the, the holdup on doing that has always been extending Commerce Way, Ambeur and making that whole street in there and making that the commercial route for the truck traffic over to the, to High Grove, to the warehouses and get it off of Michigan Avenue away from those homes. That's always been the plan that I've always heard as long as I've been involved in the city. And that's, in fact, that's the plan I would like to see go forward because I think the people that live on Michigan Avenue deserve something like that, not a, a commercial truck traffic four-lane road.
Any other questions or comments?
That is the long-term, you know, Michigan state remaining as it is and then shifting eventually, but that could take 10, 15, 20 years to get it shifted, yes.
All right. Any other questions? Do I have a motion or a second on this?
I'll make a motion to move this, uh, agenda item. Second.
A motion is second, please vote.
Motion passes and the Mayor Protem Sabino has abstained.
All right, so we're done with that. Item 23, public hearings. Public hearings of the former Community Facility District, 2025 Public Maintenance Services presented by Ms. Hernandez? You're not Ms. Hernandez.
Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst with the Public Works Department. This item will be presented by Susanna Hernandez, our consultant with Willdan.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Staff and members of the public. My name is Susanna Hernandez and I'm a senior project manager at Willdan. And I'm here to present the item on the formation of CFD 2025-1 Public Maintenance Services, which is your first CFD in the city. As part of the city's vision, this item supports goal number one of the city, which is to ensure our fiscal viability by implementing a funding mechanism via the formation of a Community Facilities District for the maintenance of new landscaping, lighting installed due to new development. As background, on March 25, um, 2025, I'm sorry, there's a typo there. The City Council approved a resolution declaring its intention to establish CFD 2025-1 Public Maintenance Services. The purpose of the CFD for tract 20395, which is going to develop into six single-family lots, is to maintain streets, drainage, landscaping, lighting and graffiti removal. The law requires that the special tax be based on costs or other reasonable basis. In this case, the city's current maintenance contracts and utility rates were used to estimate the CFD budget for fiscal year 2526 and the corresponding special tax rates. So the majority of the budget is for landscaping in the amount of $4,700. Total direct costs amount to approximately $6,000. There are items for administration, reserve and future rehabilitation of the area for a total budget of $10,0900 for fiscal year 2526. Based on that budget, the initial fiscal year 2526 CFD special tax rate is $1,0816 per single-family residential unit. And the special tax revenue may be used each year in any amount at the city's discretion to fund any of the authorized services and maintenance of the CFD. The recommendation for today is to hold a public hearing to allow any interested persons to be heard on matters related to the CFD. The city clerk can announce the results of the ballot and City Council may adopt the resolutions outlining the staff report and order the first reading of the ordinance. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? There's no questions, well, oh, Councilmember Allen?
The, the, the dollar amount that you showed up there, I think it, what was it, $1,800 and something? I think, yeah. Did we determine, did the city determine that or is that something that is kind of set in, that comes from somewhere else, like the state or somewhere that says, okay, this is what it is to this year and, you know, or did, did we determine that?
It was a coordination between, uh, Willdan and City Staff.
Okay.
Depending on what the estimate was, that's going to cost the city to maintain that area. And so a, a budget was put together outlining what it costs, what it would cost to maintain landscaping, lighting, street maintenance, et cetera.
Okay. And, and so it's just an estimate right now because we haven't really done this yet?
Correct.
And if, if this is, if, if this amount is more than we spend, do we refund to the property owners?
You could always levy less than the maximum.
Do what?
You could always charge less than the maximum. This is just the maximum, which can go up by CPI each year, but you could always charge less than what you, if you actually need less each year. If, if you end up charging more for 2526 and you have surplus money in your fund, then you could use it as a reduction to the following year's charge.
So we could lower the rates?
Correct.
Okay.
Sanders, is there a, a tax limit on this, you know, we could raise, you know, like Prop 13 to max is 2%? I mean, is this, because this is a special tax because the contractors didn't pay for all this, they put it on the homeowners, right?
Right, the Prop 13, um, is for the ad valorem property taxes that are based on the SS value, whereas like you said, this is a special tax that was voted on by the property owner and it's specifically only to pay for the authorized maintenance of that area.
But to, to your question, to raise the tax, it would have to be an election of the property owners in the CFD then to raise the tax. So we can't just arbitrarily raise that.
Yeah, I realize that, but what's, you know, how much were they paying last year compared to this year?
This would be the first year.
Hmm?
This would be the first year for the CFD special-
Oh, this is a new-
This is those new houses off Rosedale.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm getting the wrong properties here.
Anne, so I have a question for you. So this, uh, this election, the, the, on number two, is, uh, who's voting? Are we the vote, are we voting or is the property owners voting?
Uh, it's two steps. There was a ballot that was sent to the property owner so they could vote whether they are in favor or against the CFD. And the city clerk has that ballot in hand and will announce the results of, of that ballot and then City Council also approves it.
So, uh, is this to accomplish the same thing that the landscaping and lighting district does? Is this because, I mean, landscaping and lighting district that we approve every year is to take care of the landscaping and lighting and all that stuff and, and other parts of it, but is that what this is, to take care of landscaping and lighting and everything?
Landscape lighting, as we would normally do in an LMD, but there's also some storm drain and drainage channel and cleaning of that channel that's part of this, that's not typically part of a landscape maintenance district, which is why we're doing the CFD rather than the LMD.
Okay.
All right. That clarifies. Uh, City Attorney?
Yes, uh, I, I noted one correction that I think needs to be made on the ordinance. I don't know if it's to Shanita or to you, but in the one, two, three, four, the fourth whereas paragraph, it says City Council did not hold a City Council meeting on May 13, 2025, and the public hearing was postponed to May 13, 2025. I think the first, May 13 should be something else.
We could probably delete that whole, um-
Paragraph?
Paragraph.
Okay. All right, so then we'll mark that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, any other questions? So what's your recommendation? Adopt the resolutions? Is that what we're doing?
Uh, yes, after we open up the public hearing here from anybody, I think the city clerk will then announce the vote and then the, the motion would be to adopt the three resolutions and then introduce the ordinance, which I'll read the title, that's after the motion.
All right. And City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, and just for the, oh, excuse me, we have Bobby Forbes.
Okay. Ms. Forbes?
Thank you. I'm lost, I don't understand where this is or what project this is for, can you tell me, please?
This is the new housing tract on Rosedale on the other side of Mount-
Oh, okay, over there.
Lacadena.
Okay, so who, who pays for this special election? Did you, is that what you just asked?
I didn't ask who paid for it, I was just asking about who's going to be voting in it, it's just-
Who's going to be voting and who's going to pay for it? Does Grand Terrace pay for it? Does the builder pay for it? And I know where the houses are because when I first saw the dirt being moved and the stuff down on Rosedale, I'd drive by there every day, um, I called City Hall to see what was happening. So, um, is that going to be an HOA kind of neighborhood?
The property owner of that, um, area is going to pay for the special tax and the property owner also paid for the proceeding of the CFD formation.
So if, so if there's a special election, that he's paying for it, not us?
Correct.
I know.
Okay. Um, thank you, I just didn't know where it was.
Okay.
And would you please speak louder, folks? I'm struggling and I hear really well. I asked AJ to turn it up and I can only hear Matt, Doug and Jeff.
Well, I'm hearing all kinds of stuff, I'm getting feedback in my hearing aids.
I know you struggle because of the thing. I've been trying to like signal you, you know, but-
I'm like buzzing all the time, it's so loud.
But it's been really hard to hear all of you for me and I know there's not many people out here, but I'm trying to pay attention, thank you.
So who's paying for it?
The property, the developer's paying for it, has paid, is paying, has paid for the election and then the property owners will then pay that tax every year, whoever owns the property going forward, to pay out, to pay that LMD and the CFD.
So the developer's paying for the election?
Has paid for.
Has paid for the election.
Yes.
And then, um-
Which is not a surprise, the developer owns all the parcels right now, so his election was-
So just those property owners are the ones voting for it?
Well, he is the property owner because he owns all-
So he could have the election and vote for it and it's-
I'm sure he had it at his kitchen table.
So why are we wasting my time here?
Because there's the formality we have to go through.
It's the state procedure.
Wow, that's a whole new voting section. Okay. All right, so, uh, any other public comment?
No, sir, but just for the record, the city clerk's office did receive one official ballot, um, voting yes on the item.
Okay. All right, so you got a question? Any other question? You want to repeat yourself? You want to repeat yourself, Daisy?
Thank you. What was, what was the question?
Daisy, you, you want to repeat your comment you just said about the ballot?
Oh, the city clerk's office did receive one official ballot voting yes. And it counts as four votes.
All right.
How many total votes were there? Four?
Just.
Okay.
So one hundred percent of the precincts.
Man, I feel like we're at the water company. I said it. Okay, so, uh, so attorney, you have anything to add on this?
Uh, no, um, with, with the public hearing being closed at this point, I'll, I'll read the motion for the council if the council would like to move it. So the appropriate motion would be to adopt the three resolutions, uh, included in the staff report. And to introduce, uh, the ordinance, uh, with reading only of the title. And as, it is as follows, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, levying special taxes within the city of Grand Terrace Community Facilities District Number twenty-two-five dash one Public Maintenance Services, with the deletion of the fourth recital in the ordinance. And again, if it is moved tonight, this ordinance will come back for second reading on the, uh, next agenda. Is there such a motion?
Uh, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
I'll second. So you have anything else to add? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Daisy, don't we have a hearing impaired devices in this place? We used to have them. Do we still have them? We used to have headsets for people that couldn't hear that well.
Not that I'm aware of, but I, I will speak with IT about that.
We might need to find out because we do have some, we should supply that.
Okay.
And I know they used to in the past because I had to wear them one time.
All right. I'll check for you.
All right, thank you. Is that all right there, city manager? So, yeah, I want to make sure you don't over set the budget. But, yeah, we definitely need some of those for people. Unfinished, unfinished business, none new business introduction, first reading by title only. A future reading waived on ordinance amending section eight point one-one-two point one-eight-zero, established of a no fireworks safety zone of Title Eight Health and Safety of Grand Terrace Municipal Code, presented by Conrad.
Okay, very, very clean and simple. The existing code had a map attached to it that was essentially a mirror of the CAL FIRE very hazard fire, very hazardous fire area. And we adopted that map as our code. What we're doing is changing so that it's not that existing map that the, the fire, no fireworks zone is any place that is inside the CAL, the CAL FIRE very high fire district area. So if that changes in the future, we don't have to come back and change our code. And we're, we're reflecting the CAL FIRE fire zone.
So is there any significant changes where people were, um, lighting fireworks before, but now they can't because of new, uh, map?
Significant is a stretch. There's, there are probably about fifty parcels. Um, it covers, it's mostly along observation. It kind of goes across the street a little bit. There's some up on Grand Terrace Road where it expands a little bit. It's nothing, you know, no- nothing crazy like going all the way to, to Mount Vernon or something. But it is an expansion and it, it's not, and the, the residents who are there, they know this because they've got the, their insurance bill because they're in the very high fire areas. And it really, it's not a, like I said, it's not a significant change. It's a, a couple of, couple of parcels here and there and the, the lines moving them down the street.
What can we do to get the word out? Because I know they posted on the fireworks business. But I know fireworks are getting lit at those places and some even have block parties and they're, they're doing it. And then the first thing, well, I didn't know, and they do know, but what can we do far as posting it to legal terms where they said, no, this is posted here, this, besides the newspaper and?
Um, we, we can put on our website on the facts. We can get it out in the newspaper. I'd really rather not go through the expense of mailing. I mean, it's several thousand dollars. But, um, the other one we could probably with the fire, where the fireworks stand is, we'll work with those guys to post the fire map so that, um, when you're buying the fireworks, you can kind of see where it's at. We'll get a big one to put up on the fireworks stand.
Well, I know we got that pretty fire truck. We don't want to get it dirty when there's a fire up there, so. Mayor Pro Tem?
If it's only fifty more parcels, are we still looking at a couple thousand for mailers?
If we're going to do it, I'd like to mail everybody because what we'll end up with is, is some guy at the top of Glendora is going to say, I didn't know. And we might as, we might as well hit everybody. But, um, to, to go back, to do fifty, it's not that much. If you just want to do the ones that are, you know, congratulations, you're now in the zone.
Okay. So city attorney, um, oh, you want to wait for a motion? Or do we have any public comment on this? Sorry.
No, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
There's the wrong button there.
Second, city attorney, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the title of the ordinance for first reading and introduction is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending section eight point one-one-two point one-eight-zero, establishment of a no fireworks safety zone of Title Eight Health and Safety of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which amends the city's fireworks regulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Um, Councilmember Wilson has abstained.
All right.
At this time. Before you close this, just tangential to this, um, there was a request that we have a speaker from the fireworks, TNT fireworks come address us. I reached out to them. They were not interested in addressing at this point as we're not making any substantial changes to any of our fireworks ordinances. And we let them know that if we do make any if, and we're not anticipating, but if we make any substantial changes, we'll bring them forward and they can speak.
Okay. Well, I don't think a fire was starting here. It's so cold in this room, Alan.
We're, we're pretty safe here, yeah. Thank you.
All right, um, future agenda items at this time, the city council may propose items for discussions and for action to future duly agenda. A city council meeting, a consensus and majority of the quorum is required to place items on a future agenda. Do we have any requests? No. All right. City council communications, Councilman Brown?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Allen?
Well, I attended, uh, city-county conference last week with most of you guys. And, um, what I took away from there, the, the, the one thing that I remember more than anything else from taken away from there was, seems like all of Southern Cali, all of California's problems could be solved if we just built houses. You know? Everything be solved. No home, you know, crime, everything. So, but it was a good conference and, uh, uh, learned about from, you know, Chief Munsey about, um, latest and the greatest and with San Bernardino County Fire Department and with your boss with the sheriff's department. Prop thirty-six, that was a big hit. Everybody was in the auditorium listening to all that. About the updates and how we're probably going to get some wildland firefighters, um, in, pretty soon, you know? How Prop forty-seven caused the loss of wildland firefighters because there was no more low-level criminals in jail. And you can't have a high, a violent criminal out there fighting fires. So now, you know, we were talking about that and I think that's a good thing. Uh, you know, we're going to be able to do stuff like that. Um, I also, at, uh, listened to Mayor, uh, Dawson from Riverside at the CSAC conference talk about how Riverside has virtually zero youth homelessness. And she's referring to the TAE youth, TAE, uh, the TAE group, transition age youths, which are the ones who are transitioning out of foster care at age eighteen. And they go into the, the TAE program, which lasts until they're twenty-six. San Bernardino County, actually all of California, has a very high homeless population among TAE youth, TAE age. But Riverside County or Riverside City opened up a housing development just for them. And it's right downtown, just past the Mission Inn, across from the New Library, beautiful facility. Put every one of their homeless youth in there effectively at zero. And I applaud their effort for doing that. I wish everybody, every municipality, every district, every county could do something like that. Uh, because, you know, if you take the, if you get those kids, those youth, those young people, um, they, they have a, sadly, a disproportionately high number of homeless youth in that age group. And it just leads to a whole bunch of other problems, you know, crime and, um, health issues and things. So getting them housed and, and just solves a whole bunch of problems. And so I applaud Riverside City and Mayor Dawson for that move. Uh, but that is, uh, the two events that I attended. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, also attended the Arrowhead thing and the city-county conference and took away a lot of good information about, uh, the economy. But was most interested in exactly how silly our state-level government is operating. Uh, some fairly, uh, steeped individuals in the bureaucracy were there to, to comment about things. And though they were politically correct, the thing that came, came across very heavily was, is that, uh, I don't see how they get anything done, to be honest. Uh, and having, uh, Governor nuisance at, at the, at the reins, it doesn't make it better. So, you know, it would seem that we need to stay involved, uh, that the local, local authority is about the only way that we really get an opportunity to have a voice. And then also attended with, along with the mayor, the, uh, Southern California Associated Governments, uh, item. And it was a great conference, uh, some large-scale items were talked about. Of course, it's the entire Southern California area and got some benefit out of that. You know, going to these conferences sometimes won't think, you've probably heard it before. Or if you haven't heard it before, you already read it on the internet. But there are always, there's always a few points here and there, no matter what happens, even if you're not lis- listening intently, that come through. And education's a great thing and I'm sure, sure glad that I get the opportunity in this capacity to be able to draw up on that resource. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, um, we, the mayor and Ms. Shanita Tillman and I, who's not here, we had the opportunity to travel up to Sacramento and meet with our legislators. We were able to sit in on hearings. And, um, it was just such a great opportunity. The minute we got up there, we were, um, we were invited to a reception with pretty much a, a large number of legislators there that we were able to get in front of, um, informally to meet with and discuss our needs. Uh, before heading out to that reception, we, we met with some of our colleagues from other cities who had said, we've been meeting with legislators and they keep asking us about Grand Terrace. Granted, people know about Grand Terrace and what happened to y'all down there, um, during our power outages. So, um, that was a little bit exciting and, you know, e- everyone we met with was just very gracious. Um, I had the opportunity to introduce the mayor to, uh, fellow Marines up there who, when we sat with them, they said, what do you need? And they started making phone calls and asking who else was available to sit down and meet with us. And just being able to work with Ms. Tillman and the reports that she put together, they were just, they were exactly what Sacramento needed to see, what our needs are. So, um, the state is in a deficit. There's another twenty-two billion that had not, um, been made publicized at the time we were up there. And so granted, there's probably not going to be any funding coming to Grand Terrace for several, uh, of the items that were on our priority list. But we were given resources and redirected to other spaces and it forced us to come back to the table and be creative in how we will approach those. And so thank you, Conrad, for making that happen for all of us. We attended, I attended the town hall. Senator Chobok took the time to introduce herself, um, to the community who was present, give them their background, and then met with every single person at the end to hear their individual issues and needs. And so that was fantastic. Tomorrow, there is a chamber meeting, I believe Tap Out is going to be there at Woody's. Sorry, I am not well-versed in that, but I just want to make sure everyone knows, um, that is available. Um, that is happening tomorrow morning, eight AM. Um, and I did sass Matt a little bit earlier and I said, I hope you get a liquor store and a skate, skating rink right next, right next to you, steps away from your house. But it's my karma because my power doesn't go out while theirs does. So I get a liquor store, their power goes down for nine days. Um, and last but not least, happy birthday tomorrow, Matt Brown.
So you'll be twenty-one, you can go to a liquor store.
That's all I have.
Well, happy birthday. Is that all you have?
That's all.
Well, thank you. And yes, this Sacramento trip was, uh, a pretty good success as far as meeting everybody. Last year, myself, Ken Henderson, Jeff, Allen and Doug Wilson, we had to go in there and knock down doors for somebody to talk to us. So it was nice to have somebody that wanted to talk to us and they were very receptive. But, you know, I was traveling with Ms. Tillman and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and I was told I couldn't talk. But I got payback during our dinner that night. I told all kinds of dad jokes, so they had to leave me alone, so.
You made the assemblywoman serve you food.
Yeah, and I had the assembly member serve me food because I was telling good dad jokes, so. Anyway, but no, it was, it was hard. You know, when they said that another twenty-billion-dollar deficit, when we got in the elevator, I put my wallet in my front pants pocket because I was afraid. And I even said I better put my wallet there, but, um, but it was nice to have people talk to us. It was nice meeting other representation and getting the word out. And they, yeah, they talked about Grand Terrace and, and how, you know, they felt bad for us with the power outage and, you know, we've been going on and on about that. Um, ten at the art show, I saw my picture on the wall and I asked Doug to make me skinnier, just a little bit more, like another ten pounds. It was a great, uh, great thing and it was, you know, it was like walking into an art studio, you know? They had the lighting all done right and stuff and, you know, the food and, you know, just all the volunteers. And they had, uh, kids painting rocks. It was really neat. And I remember when I was a kid, um, we had pet rocks, you know, because, and then I had one pet rock and it says, turn me over. And you turn that rock over and it says, ah, that feels better. So, but anyway, that was my pet rock. And, you know, when the senator was here, it was a great turnout. When she came back, me and, uh, Councilman Wilson, we had to drive all the way back that night. And then we, we went to, uh, In-N-Out afterwards and we were all dressed up and they probably thought we were men in black or something when we ate there. But, but the senator had a, you know, um, I felt like I was doing a political science class because she told us how everything ran. But, you know, she's got a heart for our city too. And she loves our city and she wants to do the best for our city, just like our assemblywoman. So, you know, I, of course, we're going to drive all the way back from the high desert because our senator is visiting our little town. And we're going to give her that respect because she's respecting us and she's taking care of us. And like the Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, if she could write a check, I'm sure she would for everything that we need. Because she wants to make sure we get everything. And she did fight for us too during our power outage, you know, to get, you know, so we could buy the generators, just like the assemblywoman. They, they came together and they took care of Grand Terrace the best way they could. So I was really proud that she came here and is a blessing. And on, uh, Arrowhead, if you guys ever get a chance, see how devastating the fire is. Drive up Highway, Highway three-thirty. It looks like a moonscape. It's sad. You see pine trees are gone. It's going to take decades forever to come back and it will never be the same. So just one person only considering for himself and trying to get back at something that's stupid that he prevent, that he caused devastated that whole area. So it was probably a blessing we didn't have full-on rainstorms this year because that whole. So it was probably a blessing we didn't have full-on rainstorms this year because that whole mountain would have just collapsed. Now they're working on it. They're continuing working on it and it's very sad to see that, you know? And, um, it's going to take a long time for it to come back. And with that, um, on the art show though, I did have a, I don't know city manager, if we could get a budget on that, but, uh, get in our new pictures, like when Ruben, when he does the, the pictures over there with the lights. But I want to have like our eyes move. So when people come in, like in the haunted house, that we could, you know, eyes move back and forth. Is there any way we could do that?
Yeah, we'll call Disney.
Okay. So, uh, but it would be kind of neat to have, you know, something like, but anyway, but a good group of talented people and, and, um, that's all I have for, oh, yeah, please, you know, it's going to be a beautiful day for Blue Mountain Festival. It's not going to be hot. We have the parade going and it's going to be, you know, our second year and it's just going to get bigger and better. And, you know, thank you for everybody who's putting it together, Johan, you're part of that. And, you know, the cars will be out there. I'm going to walk. I'm going to get my steps in and walk. Me and the city manager are going to walk together. I'm going to walk with them this year. I felt bad for them last year and walking behind me and stuff, so.
We'll hold hands and skip together.
Well, if you want to, but, you know. But if you fall down, I'm not going to grab you. Okay, so that's all I have. City manager, you have any communication?
Yeah, um, as you said, the Blue Mountain Festival starts ten, the parade starts at ten-thirty. We'll be going down Mount Vernon, starting at Brentwood and then making a left up to Richard Rollins Park. Please come down and enjoy the parade and enjoy the festival and it should be beautiful weather for it. And it will be on our newly, uh, planted and leveled soccer field. So it'll be the first event that, first, first steps on that field in four months. So we'll get to break it in. I'm looking forward to that.
So are the cars going to be able to pill out on that new grass?
Yeah, yeah, no, no cars on the grass ever again.
All right.
Um, the, two quick things, just to, please, as you, um, get your news about the community, go to the city's website, just the facts. We're trying to put information up, couple of articles a week and just, some of it may not be terribly exciting, but to get that information out. So we're, we're trying to be the source that's, that's, really gets the, the, what you need to know out there. Um, and on the webpage, we've added a community calendar function. What that allows is, is that, um, individuals and groups can post activities that's important to them. Women's Club, Boy Scouts, Shad's, uh, Wall of Freedom events. We can get those on, so it becomes a clearinghouse for the city's events, no matter what's going on. So if you're bored in Grand Terrace, you can go there and find something to do. We're really excited about that.
So on that, how do they go about getting stuff on there? I mean, they're just can't just get a hold of our website. They have to put the request in, right?
Um, there is, actually, go to that, open the calendar. There's a button there, sir, that says, add an event. Fill out the checklist, add the event, and then one of the staff will review it. And if it meets the criteria, um, and the, the criteria is, is that it should be a community-based, open-to-the-public, non-commercial event. And so, um, the idea is to get it, as many people engaged and other things going on in the community. So Shad's Light Show is, is, would fall underneath that, that category. And you can create and publish the event. Staff will review it and put it up there and...
So on a community event, if, uh, if it's not commercial, but if a commercial, say Lauberger's doing a fundraiser for, well, I think we have a, the girls' softball teams tomorrow, the semi...
I, I would see that as a very reasonable...
Doing the thing, so they can do that?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll be as, as liberal as we can with this. The idea is to get the information out, get one central place for the community to get their activities so that you don't miss baseball sa- sign-ups or you know about whatever's going on at, at the Easter egg hunt at the church. And we can get all these things going in one place and you don't have to hunt around for them. So it'll be a, a great addition. I'm very excited. Judith has done a wonderful job. And then if we can, and can ask to close the meeting in a memory of Ryan Spandrio, Spandrio, county firefighter who was killed off-duty, um, a couple, last week. And if we can close the meeting in his memory, I'd appreciate that.
How do you pronounce his name?
Uh, Ryan Spandrio.
Ryan Spandrio?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, Ryan Spandrio. Uh, he passed in an off-duty accident. Um, you guys can pray for his wife, Tori, and their two young children. Uh, we'll be burying him, or his memorial will be this Friday, um, in Chino. So, I appreciate that, Conrad.
How old are his kids?
Uh, both less than three.
Spandrio?
Spandrio.
Spandrio?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have closed session. Do I have to read all this, city attorney, or are we just going to say closed session?
Um, I can do it and keep it short.
I want, I want you to earn your money.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, so we have three closed-session items under the conference real, real property negotiators under Government Code, section five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight. The first property is Palm and Barton Road, two-two-seven-nine-five Barton Road in Grand Terrace, APN zero-two-seven-six-dash-two-oh-two-dash-four-seven. The second property is also, uh, Palm and Barton Road, two-two-seven-nine-five Barton Road in Grand Terrace, APN zero-two-seven-six-dash-two-oh-two-dash-six-one. And the third property is also, uh, two-two-seven-five-seven Barton Road in Grand Terrace, APN zero-two-seven-six-dash-two-oh-two-dash-thirty-one. The property negotiated for each of the three properties are the Anthony and Angelina Peta. Uh, agency negotiated are Conrad Bulowich, the city manager, and myself, city attorney. And under negotiation, our price and terms of payment as to all three items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, before we go, then, we'll close for Ryan, but I want to say a prayer for Ryan and his, his family. Can you please join me? Lord, you, you know, we don't know when we're going to see you, God, but, um, you know when we take our first breath and you know when we take our last. Lord, I just ask that you just give comfort to Ryan's wife and his kids, God, as they go through this time and the big questions, why? That you just be with them, God, and they could come to you at any time, Lord, and you always wrap your arms around them and protect them. Lord, I ask that you be with his brothers and sisters and, and arms who has worked with Ryan and, you know, you just give them comfort to you, God, and just protect our first responders always, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Okay, we'll be in closed session. I know you guys want to go home, but sorry about that. Well, we're back from closed session. Uh, city attorney, you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're reporting out on, uh, the three closed-session items involving the properties at two-two-seven-nine-five and two-two-seven-five-seven Barton Road. Update was provided by the city manager. Discussion was had. Uh, direction was provided to the city manager, however, no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues and the city staff, especially for the meetings and they're coming up here to do their presentation. They all did really great and should be proud of them, Conrad, they, you got a good crew there. So we're going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting will be held in May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five at six PM. Any request to have items placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. We're going to close and, uh, honor firefighter Ryan Sambido, Sambidro? Spandrito. Forgive me. And we're going to close in his honor and, you know, our prayers and our thoughts and, you know, with the families and, you know, thank him for protecting us and, and just be with his family. And hopefully we see everybody at the parade this Saturday. We line up at nine. The parade starts at ten-thirty. Then we're going to have the Blue Mountain Festival until five. Thank you. Have a good night.